Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Daily City Council Special Study Session today. Today, we're going to be talking about parking. And I want to first thank all of you for coming and also to the, to the audience that's watching us on the Community Channel. This is obviously a very important topic for our community. So I want to thank you all for being here. And let's get started. Let me start off with City Manager Sean Amel.
All right. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. At the council's request, staff is revisiting the complicated and citywide issue regarding parking. The purpose of tonight's parking study session is to evaluate the current and future parking needs and to begin discussions with our community regarding parking options. And I think it's wonderful that we've gotten such a big turnout because the more information we get, the better informed we are and the better we can move forward with this complicated topic. Tonight, we will review first the key parking initiatives that currently take, have taken place to date, the parking approaches that are in place right now, the nature of the parking complaints by neighborhood that we not only get in the city manager's office, but in our other departments such as Public Works and our police department and sometimes Finance, the discussion of what staff is recommending for community outreach and an action timeline for implementing any change. By way of history and background, on March 22nd in 2003, there was an original, some of you may be here, the original Daily City Protective Association formed a parking summit to address the parking crisis through a community-led discussion among neighbors. An extensive report was compiled by this group to capture the extensive parking problems and proposed solutions by neighborhood. This summit subsequently led to various changes in citywide parking approaches at that time. On May 27th, 2003, council did adopt an ordinance that established commercial parking permits, which is still in place today. On September 10th, 2007, council adopted an ordinance that established parking restrictions for citywide street sweeping. And while the necessity to establish citywide street sweeping was to meet the performance requirements and regulations of the regional stormwater permit enforced by the California Regional Water Control Board, it did add to existing parking issues. On December 8th, 2014, council adopted a resolution that increased the parking meter rates. On January 26th, 2015, council did not approve a recommendation to establish preferential parking permit limits and fees, and we'll get into that a little bit more detail later. And on February 13th, 2017, council did approve an ordinance that amended Title 17's zoning ordinance to allow front yard paving. There are three parking approaches in the city that are currently in place. There's commercial parking, metered parking, and preferential residential parking. And now I'm going to hand it over to Leilani Ramos, who's been busy running through the streets this last couple of months, analyzing all of our parking issues, our zones, commercial, non-commercial. So take it over.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Commercial parking was established as a result of resident complaints about the overnight parking of limousines, truck trailers, buses, and other commercial vehicles in residential areas. And residents who relied upon such commercial vehicles for their livelihood had also voiced their concerns about the lack of legally acceptable parking areas for their vehicles within Daly City. In an effort to meet the needs of neighborhoods and working residents alike, the City of Daly City instituted a pilot program for commercial vehicle parking in 2003, and it is still in place today. Commercial vehicle parking permits are only available to Daly City residents and businesses. An application and proof of residency or valid business license must be submitted to the Finance Department with a nonrefundable $100 fee for each permit application. The city-issued permit is valid for one year and expires every June 30th. There is currently a limit of two permits per Daly City business. Certain street segments are designated for parking only by commercial vehicles displaying a city-issued permit. There are three commercial vehicle parking zones, as shown on this map. Zone 1 is located in the Bay Shore area. Zone 2 is located in the Civic Center area, and Zone 3 is located in the Cerro Monte Signs and markings identify the permitted commercial vehicle parking zones. Permits are required between the hours of 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. every day. Vehicles parked in the permitted commercial vehicle parking zones without displaying a city-issued permit will be subject to citation and penalties as outlined in the Daly City Municipal Code and are summarized as follows. Any vehicle, any commercial vehicle parked outside a commercial vehicle parking zone will receive a $258 citation. On average, the police department issues about 53 citations per month. Any commercial vehicle parked in a commercial vehicle parking zone without displaying a city-issued permit will receive a $108 citation. On average, the police department issues about 11 citations per month. Any commercial vehicle, any non-commercial vehicle parked in a commercial vehicle parking zone will receive a $33 citation. On average, the police department issues about 15 citations per month. Based on department feedback, there are a minimum number of complaints received about this parking approach. Metered parking is offered for patrons of local businesses found in high-demand commercial areas of the city that have minimal parking capacity to encourage the turnover of parking spaces. Meters are operational Monday through Saturday between the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. The hourly parking fee is not enforced on Sundays or legal holidays, and if a meter is broken or inoperable, parking is limited to the posted time limit or two hours, whichever is shorter. There are approximately 553 coin-operated electronic parking meters spread across four metered parking zones. Here's a map of Zone 1 and 2, which is located at the top-of-the-hill area. Here we have Zone 3, which is located around the San Pedro Road, Mission Street, and School Street corridor. And Zone 4 is located on Junipero Serra in the Civic Center area. In 2014, the city council established a uniform hourly parking rate for all parking meters of $1 per hour in an effort to increase the low turnover of parking spaces to better serve the needs of the community. The increased rate was also to become comparable to neighboring cities at the time. A recent survey confirms that the current hourly parking meter rate is still comparable with neighboring cities, with the exception of Pacifica, where parking meter stations serve the purpose of controlling traffic and turnover at Lindermark Beach and the City and County of San Francisco. In the recent survey, citation fees of those neighboring cities were also compared. Any vehicle parked in a metered parking space with an expired meter receives a $26 citation. However, the majority of neighboring cities in San Mateo County charge between $30 and $45. On average, the police department issues about 250 citations per month. When the city council increased the hourly parking meter rate in 2014, it was also in an effort to generate enough revenue to update to newer parking meters. At the time, the cost to upgrade to a meter that accepted payment by credit card and mobile device applications was $465 per smart meter or $14,000 per multi-space meter. Today, the cost to upgrade is $840 per smart meter and $15,000 per multi-space meter. Since the costs have nearly doubled over the last five years, staff will explore parking management grant opportunities through the Metropolitan Transportation Commission to fund upgraded meters as a way to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. The city receives numerous complaints on a frequent basis regarding inoperable parking meters. The majority of those reported issues are due to intentional jamming of the coin slot with gum wrappers and paper. Before exploring options of replacing outdated coin-operated parking meters, expanding metered parking zones, and/or raising the citation amount, a more extensive study should be Preferential residential parking permits were implemented in 1977 to deter commuter overflow parking from BART and transportation hubs and give parking preference to residents who live in the surrounding neighborhoods. Those residing in a restricted parking area may apply for a parking permit with the Finance Department by bringing a copy of their current car registration showing the address of the residence listed in a preferential residential parking permit zone. Preferential residential parking permits are provided at no cost to eligible residents residing in the zoned areas. There is currently no limit to the number of permits issued per household. The city-issued permit is valid for one year and expires every June 30th. There are four preferential residential parking permit zones in the city. Zone A is located in the original Daly City area near BART station with approximately 1,700 residences. Permits are required between the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. Monday through Friday. Zone B is located east of the Mission Street corridor along the Irvington and Brunswick Street area with approximately 500 residences. Permits are required between the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. Monday through Friday. Zone C is located in the northeast areas of the Westlake District along John Daly Boulevard with approximately 430 residences. Permits are required between the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. Monday through Friday. And Zone D is located at the corner of East Market Street and County Street with approximately 200 apartments. Permits are required between the hours of 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. A recent survey indicates that a few neighboring cities offer preferential residential parking in high-congested areas such as downtowns and BART. Most cities offer this program at no cost to provide parking preference to residents who live in the surrounding neighborhoods, with the exception of Burlingame, Menlo Park, Milbrae, and San Francisco. These cities impose a limit on the number of parking permits per household, with the exception of South San Francisco. In the recent survey, citation fees of those neighboring cities were also compared. Any vehicle parked in a preferential residential parking permit zone without an applicable permit receives a $33 citation. Our neighboring cities in San Mateo County charge between $30 and $45. During a targeted enforcement period on May 29, 2019, through May 31, 2019, the police department issued 235 citations. During another targeted enforcement period on June 14, 2019, through June 21, 2019, the police department issued 285 citations. In addition to commuter overflow parking, the total number of registered vehicles per household must also be considered to understand the full scope of parking congestion in the affected neighborhoods. In reviewing the preferential residential parking permits issued in fiscal year 2018, 2019, permits were issued to 2,023 households for a total of 4,728 permits. This slide shows a breakdown by number of permits issued per household. Based on the information above, 82% of the preferential residential parking permits issued is between one permit per household and three permits per household. As such, addressing the commuter overflow may be the most beneficial approach for affected residents. Since the inception of the preferential residential parking permits in 1977, commute times now vary significantly, and the number of commuters has since increased. The intent to give parking preference to residents who live in the surrounding neighborhoods of BART and transportation hubs is no longer effective. If changing the enforcement periods of Zones A, B, and C were to be considered as a solution in the future, the estimated cost for replacement parking restriction signs in the currently established preferential residential parking zones is $28,530. The city is aware that other neighborhoods not currently zoned as a preferential residential parking permit zone may be interested in establishing a new zone. Daly City Municipal Code 10.40.020 provides that no area shall be designated for preferential parking privileges unless and until there has been received by the city council a verified petition by at least one-third of the adult residents in the area for the proposed residential parking permit area. Daly City's 33% majority to petition to establish a new preferential residential parking permit zone is rather low compared to neighboring cities. Burlingame and San Mateo require a 67% majority, while Milbrae requires a 75% majority. San Mateo has temporarily placed the evaluation of new zones and zone expansions on hold, pending further review of their current program, and many cities are also evaluating their parking issues. Now I will turn it over to Stephen to review the nature of resident parking complaints and begin discussions on next steps.
Okay. Thank you, Leilani. So I do want to kick this off with just saying that our parking challenges are in no way unique to Daly City. There are demographic and economic trends that have affected housing density and parking availability across the entire Bay Area, and there's local governments across, in urban areas across the entire country, actually, that are facing parking challenges right now, and it's due to urbanization. Our global population is urbanizing at a very rapid rate, including here. So here in the Bay Area, we've got a really robust economy, one of the largest in the world, an influx of workers, and slower housing construction. It's led to densification in our residential neighborhoods that were designed as suburbs, really. So here, we're often feeling the effects of those global trends in urbanization a little more acutely because our economy's roaring. So overall, definitely not unique in facing these parking challenges. We are currently, believe it or not, the ninth most densely populated city in the entire country. This is a list of cities with 75,000 or more residents. Above us on that list are places like New York and San Francisco, and below us are major metropolitan areas like Boston, Philadelphia, Miami, Chicago. So we're number nine. What that means is that single-family homes are now occupied by multiple generations or more people, and this urbanization has kind of outpaced the provision of public transport, too. So here we are on the border of San Francisco, a major hub, and on the border of a largely suburban peninsula. So a lot of our residents are really dependent on their cars as a source of mobility. The public transportation isn't really connecting at the neighborhood level, and despite the fact that BART in Daly City has some of the highest user rates in the system, not everybody works along the BART lines. So a lot of people are dependent on their cars. So here we are shedding our suburban roots for a really urban future, and it creates growing pains. And we're in the middle of it right now. So I think that we might not be able to address those global trends, but we can collaborate with residents to address the growing pains. So that brings me to public opinions on parking. Okay. There is no doubt that this is a contentious issue, and in fact, it's divisive. There's competition for this limited public resource, you know, street space. So without a really robust regulatory structure, it leads to frustration and conflict. And some of the most common drivers of the divisiveness that we see kind of fall into five different categories, and this is where people generally fall on one end or the other for each of these things. Number one, the actual establishment of a residential parking zone. People are kind of on both sides. Number two is the idea of having to pay for permits. Another one is enforcement, or maybe in our case, irregular enforcement of existing regulations. Another one is occupant density in single-family homes, and then finally, new development in general. So we can also go further than that, and over the years, our office, Public Works, Police, Economic Community Development, we all received complaints about parking. And then we can monitor Nextdoor and social media and receive inquiries and complaints that way. And then we have the lived experience of our staff that are actually out there on the ground and know the city like the back of their hand, and they kind of know what's going on. So through all of that, we've met and we got together, and we can generalize some of the common complaints that we hear. They fall into these categories. The first is neighborhood-level complaints. These are things like, "My neighborhood has too many cars." "My neighbor's gaming the permit systems on the behalf of non-residents and using their address to get them a permit." Or, "My neighbors aren't using their garage for parking." Or, "There's frustration with the number of renters per household." There's this really interesting kind of trend in some of the complaints around entitlements for homeowners versus renters and how they should be different. And then the fact that commuters are parking in my neighborhood. So that's kind of like that neighborhood-level typical stuff we hear. The next deals with streets, curbs, and sidewalks. The first is this desire to bring back the red-tip painting program for driveways. Another is street sweeping in general, the conflicts around that with citations and unmoved cars, and then just questioning why we need street sweeping to begin with. And then there's cars parking driveways, there's too little turnover in street parking, and then there's the whole issue of parking on sidewalks and impeding pedestrian traffic. And then there's commercial impacts, and this is really about people who depend on a commercial vehicle as their primary source of travel, their primary vehicle. Where are they supposed to park that when they go home? And then also, there's complaints about commercial businesses operating out of garages or homes and taking up street parking. And then finally, there's this last category. It mostly deals with development. It's the idea that new development doesn't have enough parking, there's too much new development, or there's just not enough public transportation to get us out of our cars. So that's the list, okay? It's long, and there's more, but those are generally, you know, what we hear. So we think that we really do need a robust community engagement program so that we can hear from everybody. All we've heard so far is the history of past efforts, which are kind of dated at some point, and then, you know, complaints over time that we receive. There is a dual purpose in community outreach, and I really want to highlight number one on this slide, and it's to educate people on our existing regulations because we do have them, and we have taken steps to address parking. It could be as simple as, this is how you petition for a residential zone. And then the next thing is to gather feedback and really match solutions with hotspot areas that we can identify with residents. So what we'll go through now is a menu of community outreach options. It's all open for discussion and modification. Would love to get all of your feedback on it. It's not set in stone in any way, but we can come up with a few different ideas on what we would include. And the first is neighborhood forums. When we analyzed the type of complaints that we got, it turned out that there was a geography to them. And it's interesting because each of these areas on the screen, there's six that we parsed out, they all face unique parking challenges, and they have kind of distinct identities to begin with. And it's often the built environment that's really determining the level of parking difficulty. Okay? So we'll go through that and explain it. There's two of them that stand out the most in terms of generating the most complaints, and that's, the first is the eastern neighborhoods, and the second is Westlake. The nature of the complaints in those two areas really differs, though. So they're very unique. So if we can engage at the neighborhood level, we can perhaps find more hyper-local solutions for those hotspots. So the eastern neighborhoods, that's original Daly City, Hillside, Crocker, physically there, the setbacks are short. The driveways don't accommodate a lot of cars. It's a dense neighborhood. It resembles more urban neighborhoods of San Francisco than it does suburban neighborhoods closer to the coast in Daly City. And residents in those areas are often impacted by people accessing BART or businesses on Mission Street. So not surprisingly, Zone A, B, and D are located in this neighborhood or in this area. The next is Westlake. That neighborhood's been growing denser more recently, and there are longer driveways there that accommodate more parking, but some of the complaints have really focused on lately, at least, rideshare drivers taking up street parking and generating litter. Another one is around short-term rentals and front yard paving. That's been pretty controversial. And then we also have one of our regulated zones in that neighborhood, Zones C. Cerro Monte, so this area is interesting because there's double-wide driveways and garages typically, so there's a lot of off-street parking, but the complaint's really around, "Where do my visitors park?" because it limits the amount of space on the street. There's also, we get requests for handicap spaces in that neighborhood as well. And even though there's these large commercial areas that residents and nonresidents are accessing, they have plenty of parking in their lots, so they're not having that type of impact that Mission Street has on the eastern neighborhoods, for example. And then the last two on the list, Bay Shore and San Francis, we actually don't get a lot of complaints from those neighborhoods, but maybe it's because we just haven't reached those people. And that's the idea around this more robust community engagement program. We did receive a proposal from the Peninsula Conflict Resolution Center to facilitate these meetings, provide, in multiple languages, and provide some staff support on really figuring out what the best way to structure them would be. They're probably a great third party to use because they're neutral, they've got conflict resolution in their name, and this is a really contentious issue, so they might be great to partner with. Through this process, we could also gauge the success or get feedback on our existing parking zones, and maybe out of that comes some tweaks to how we structure them. Okay. So another aspect of the engagement is surveying. The neighborhood forums are in-person, and they require you to be there. Not everyone can do that these days, so best practice is really combining other ways of outreach with the traditional in-person model. And we've used all of the tools on the screen in past efforts, most notably our Parks and Open Space Master Plan or Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan. These were recent ones that used some online surveying component. The telephone survey is a way to, okay, so responses to telephone surveys are declining, but it's a really important way to reach a certain segment of our population. Online surveys, kind of, if you add that in, you get a wider age range in response. So in the past, we've actually done dual-mode surveying, which combines both, and you hire a survey firm, they do this professionally, you, you know, base your target list of respondents based on different data sets, and we can work through that as well. And basically, people get a phone call or a postcard to participate in a custom link for an online survey, and what the survey firm does is guarantees a statistically valid results, essentially, and they can spread the results over the geography of our six different areas. We, as a city, could also do an online survey, and that's pretty common practice, too, for cities, to kind of host it online. We could have a dedicated webpage, but we don't have the ability to target and have that geographic spread, which I think is important based on the unique nature of the different areas. But that's certainly an option, and it kind of, you know, the, if you employ a survey firm, there's cost to that, but, you know, we could kind of design it so that we reduce costs by hosting our own survey. Another thing is the online pinable map. This would be a great tool for people to go online and match solutions to particular problems in their neighborhood. Mapping tools are kind of all the rage right now with engagement. So we could easily fold that into the online survey component, too, have it hosted on our website, things like that. Some of the things we're looking for out of the survey, and we'd love to work with you on refining the list of questions and getting the information that you'd love to see, but where do people live, what are the pressing challenges, what is their willingness to pay for permits, what is their willingness to implement a residential parking permit zone, and then kind of elicit some ideas around solutions. And then finally, there's this idea for a task force or an advisory policy committee, whatever you want to call it. It would be a group that has reps from each of the geographic areas, and this is the group that's solution-oriented. They can synthesize the info that is generated out of all our forums and surveys. They can kind of go through it with a fine-tooth comb and figure out really what's rising to the top in terms of messaging. And then they have this important task of identifying solutions and matching them with different areas. And then we could kind of come back and report back to you and then see where you want to go in terms of implementation. The Peninsula Conflict Resolution Center would be great with this group, too. So, you know, all of our neighborhoods are unique. They don't share the same parking issues, so I think that having some sort of engagement process that, that kind of gets more voices involved would be good. This is a proposed timeline. Maybe we continue the study session into the summer. Maybe you'd want feedback on our survey, for example. And then in the fall, we would launch our first phase of outreach. This is the fact-finding mission through the neighborhood forums and the online and telephone components, and then we'd come back to you in the spring, report back on how that's going, and then we'd engage the task force to start working on solutions. And then hopefully, by the start of next summer, we'd be ready to really talk with you about where you want to go in terms of implementing solutions and the costing and all of that.
So let me just say a few things to the, to the audience members. So where are we at is, this is a study session, and typically in a study session, the staff prepares a report, presents it, and then the council discusses and sort of gives feedback into where, some of the things we're thinking of and some of the things we want to see for the next meeting moving forward. But before we do that, and we normally don't allow it, but because you all are here, I want to hear from you. So this meeting is not the last one, obviously. It's just the first one in a series of many, which will culminate in a task force, and so you will have plenty of opportunity to And so you will have plenty of opportunity to give feedback. I'd like to start with today, but recognize that this meeting ends at 6:45, because we have another meeting then, and then we have another meeting at 7:00, and it's going to go on for quite a while this evening. So if you want to say something, please fill out a speaker card, and then just hand it to one of the staff members, and you can come up, and I'll give you about a minute. Again, this is not the final word on this. You'll have plenty of opportunity to talk to us. You can also even talk to us in person, and as an email, whatever your thoughts are, we'll take the feedback. Okay? All right. So with that, let's, let me begin the discussion with the council, and ask first if any council members have any comments or questions. Mr. Giovanni?
I'm going to talk to people.
Okay. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make a couple of comments as the cards start to come in. First of all, I'd like to thank the city manager, Ms. Malby. Apparently, the council expressed their concern about parking in Daly City, and she did not forget. And subsequently, that's why this is starting now, and it's something that is sorely needed in Daly City. I'd like to also thank staff, Leilani, and Stephen. Thank you for the historical perspective of the parking issues that has happened in Daly City. And Stephen, I knew it took some work to come up with various solutions. I have some other points I'd like to make, but I'd like to hear from the public as well. But I just wanted to say thank you so much for bringing this to us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Dr. Ryan?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to staff for putting this together. It takes a lot of hard work to compile, just like what Vice Mayor was saying, the historical perspective on parking. I think one thing I want to hear perspective as well is from, like, law enforcement, specifically the parking enforcement, because they're there, out there every single day, and I want to know what their perspective is as well, in terms of the different layers. Because we hear it from the citizens, but the people that are enforcing the law, what do you think, what do you think, instead of just enforcing law, what are some other solutions that we can, they can provide?
That's a good idea. Good point. Good point. Ms. Mill?
I think this is so important for our community, and most definitely a topic that is on the minds of many in many of our neighborhoods. And so, I am looking at the proposed action timeline, and it's very robust in nature, and it's taking an approach in looking at the issue and problem long-term-wise. So I see, and when I see it's already kind of one year, and really diving into community engagement, for me, that's important. And it's the start of it this evening to hear from the residents. So thank you to all of the staff for making this happen, and for the leadership of Ms. Malby.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah, of course, you can't do it without our staff. This is, as we know, is a quality-of-life issue. So we all hear from everybody on the ground, and all these different trucks and everything that's being there. So hopefully, we can come out and work together, and what a real community forum is. And yet you guys took the time to come out here, so we want to work together with you and with the staff here who did a great job. Thank you. And with my colleagues, and let's see what we can come up with. And I like the timeline as well, because also the schools will be in. To get feedback through our school districts would be good, to be able to reach some of the families. So thank you very much for staff and our city manager. And thank you for the community for coming.
Okay. So I think we should begin. So when I call you up, I'll give you about two minutes, and, uh... Thank you, Madam City Clerk. So again, welcome. Thank you for coming, and we appreciate you providing the input. So the first three up, just so that you know, and you get ready to come up, Bill Hamilton, Chris Martin, Linda White. Mr. Hamilton?
Thank you. I really appreciate this presentation. I thought it was very well done, and I really learned a lot. My only concern is that a lot of the problems are obvious, that everyone knows what they are, they've been outlined here, and we know the percentage of people who have those problems, and where, what neighborhoods they're located in. So the only thing I don't understand is why we need another year of study to go over the same information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Chris Martin?
Well, counsel, city staff. I do live in the Bay Shore area, and I know I've made some complaints. I know he said there wasn't many from there. It's probably because a lot of people think maybe we're in San Francisco, because we're so close. But yeah, the issue, a couple of issues that I've seen is the houses are next to each other, so there's no parking in between because of driveways. Then a lot of the, some of the houses that are getting developed are, like I was saying, monster houses on a small lot. I mean, there's going to be a lot of people in there, a lot of parking issues. We have a commercial area that you say over on Geneva, but the signs aren't up. I did report that. And also, the feet, how far do they park from where to where? How do you know? The street's not marked in some kind of fashion to let you know how much trucks take place? You have the houses that park on that side and run right across Geneva, too. I think that's kind of an issue. I know it's, that, and just the neighborhoods, there's just a lot of cars. You've got Airbnb in a lot of the houses, the rental houses. Now that you're allowing them to do the in-laws and stuff easier downstairs, you get a lot more people in a house. I mean, there's a couple of houses in my neighborhood that there's 10 or 12 people in the house. That's, you know, that's a lot of cars. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. We have Linda White, Rita Draven, Joe DeViccia. Ms. White?
Hi. Thank you. I just wanted to thank you for the detail that was put into the report, because not, it's not one-size-fits-all. Because I know when it came to the paving of the front yards, I think that was approved under one-size-fits-all. And the response from the council at that time, someone who's no longer on the council, was, well, where were all of you during the study session? It was like, well, that's why we elected you. So I think this time around, I think there was a lot of study that went into it, because obviously, the uniqueness of Westlake has, we have multi, we have a lot of apartment buildings, we have single-family residences, we have businesses, we have Uber. So a lot of, so I really appreciate that we're not looking at this as a one, one solution fits everybody. So, and not everybody agrees with paying for permits, or, so I'd really like to be involved as you go into the communities, because I don't want to be the complainer on part of the solution.
Good. Ryan? Thank you, Ms. White. Rita Draven?
Hi. Thank you for having this forum, so that we can get our two cents worth in.
Yeah.
Years ago, when I put in an in-law apartment downstairs, and I wanted a legal one, I had to show that I could park four cars off the street. There was two inside tandem, two in the driveway. I had to enlarge my driveway in order to do that. I don't think that's in play anymore, is it? Because there's, there's people with six, seven cars out in front of their houses. Lady next door to me passed away. She had one car that she parked in her garage. There are now six people parking six cars, a truck, and a ski boat. You can't have that kind of looseness in your, in your laws or your permits in order to keep down the amount of parking that's going on. It looks like a junkyard, a junkyard out there now. I haven't been able to park in front of my house for three years now, at least, the last three years. And you've got Clarionada Avenue was completely filled with those junk trucks. It looks like crap out there. And I'm sure my home is depreciating in cost because of that. Not only that you can't park out in front. There are a lot out, oh, and I'm in the San Francis area. And I think that with the amount of parking lots that are available, you've got Saramonti, you've got Tianne Varane, you've got Westlake, plus your schools' parking lots, that you should be able to get some of this stuff off the street.
Thank you very much, ma'am. We have Joe DeViccia, Rose Navarez, and Katrina Elliott. Joe?
Good evening.
Evening.
Thank you very much for having this meeting. I want to give a special kudos to Shauna Malby for returning my letter after several letters and responding to my letters. I've been a resident of Daly City for 60 years, and our block had 100, 100 children. Those children grow up. They had cars. Parking was not a problem. Reason? Garage's were not chock-full. Garage's are now being used in storage. They're so full, they're actually fire hazards. And I think if the fire chief just went down our block, he would see there an accident waiting to be happening. Also, cars parking on lawns over gas lines and sewer lines, and with this rain we had and everything, it's another accident waiting to be happening. So, it's kind of gotten out of hand, because what I see is the absentee landowners are renting out houses or rooms, and like has been said before, there's eight cars per room, or eight cars per house. And I talk too much, because I'm an ex-salesman, but, anyway, I put a list up there on your desk, some of my ideas, that if you would be so kind to, to just take it into consideration, I would be very appreciative. Thank you again, and thank you, Shauna.
We have your list, so thank you very much. Rose Navarez?
Hi. I live in a one-bedroom, one-bath house, and I wanted to remodel several years ago to add another bathroom, another bedroom, but I don't have a garage. So the city denied me that option unless I demolished my entire house and built a garage. So why do I need a garage just to remodel, to add an extra bedroom and an extra bath, when all my neighbors are remodeling their garages, and they have people living in there, and then they're parking on the street? They're asking me to build a garage, so I can have vehicles just to remodel my house, but then all my other neighbors, illegal or not, they're using their garages to live in, or have other people live in there, and then all their cars are on the street. So I'm really irritated about that. I don't think it's fair that they make me demolish my house just to have a garage, when they're allowing other people to use their garages, not for parking their cars, but to live in, either their friends, in-laws, renters, whatever. And I'm really upset over that.
Thank you, Ms. Navarez. Katrina Elliott, Delina Roa Montgomery, and Morgan Emlee. Katrina?
Hello, everyone. My biggest complaint is my neighborhood. I'm in the 900 block of Skyline Drive. My neighborhood looks like a parking lot. It's ridiculous. Everyone, I understand they've pulled up their lawn, but some neighbors decide to pull up their lawn to park. They only have one car, but then their garage is packed with stuff, and it's unfair. I have arthritis in my knee, and sometimes I have to park in my driveway, and then I have to move my car, because my mom needs to get out of the driveway to drive her truck. She's got a truck, I have a car. She's got a bad back, I have a bad knee. I'm trying not to do too much walking, but, and the, you know, I noticed that you've been luring the corners, and the painting, there's one house, one area next to our house that the paint has worn down. People are still parking there. They're still parking there. And they're parking across the street, so I, I back into my driveway, because people are speeding up and down the street. So, across the street, when my mom's pulling out of her, pulling out of the driveway, she, you know, she comes out the regular way. And a lot of times, she's got to maneuver, she's in a big SUV, and there's always a car that parks on the corner. Cars should not be allowed to park on that corner, period, because that's, it's right at the stop sign, and people are blaring up and down the street. My son can't even go outside and ride his bike and skateboard or anything, because it's not safe. The parking, the people in our neighborhood, some of them are not nice. They sit there and wait for their car, a spot to become available, and then they park, and it's like I can't even park in front of my own house. I've been there for almost 45, 47 years. We pay our property taxes. My son is growing up, he goes to school in Pacifica, because I like Pacifica School District better for elementary right now. But I want him to be able to, when he takes over the house. I don't want to have to have him be faced with problems that are going on right now. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Elliott. Delina Roa Montgomery? Come on in, right?
Good evening.
Evening.
I've been living in my home for over 30 years, and it was fine. I live on Crocker, I mean, Evergreen and Bellevue, and they used to have that empty lot. But once they build those homes, there's so many people there on Evergreen and Bellevue. There's not two, there's like four to six cars in each unit. There's like 32 units, I think, on that block, and ever since then, I've had problems. I have no driveway or garage, I just have a front yard. I came last year to see if I could get a permit to pave my front yard, get rid of it, so I could have parking, and they wouldn't allow me. I have a bad knee, and I do have arthritis also. I've had to park as far away as four blocks at 10 o'clock at night. So it's unsafe, because there's a lot of wild animals up there. We've seen coyotes, raccoons, possums, and it's just getting more and more hard. People leave their cars and leave the car in front of my house, because I have a big empty space, like, you know, to park. They leave it four to five days in front of my house, till street cleaning. So I'm not even to park in front of my house. So it's just become unbearable, almost. I'm even willing to pay for the permit, get my yard, front yard totaled, and have a driveway of some kind, and I was denied. I'm willing to pay for it. So, it's become a real bad problem. And I've been there a long time, I pay property taxes, and I think something should be done for the people that do live directly in front of their, you know, the spaces in front of their homes. I shouldn't have to walk four blocks. So hopefully, you guys will come up with a solution, maybe a permit tag, something, so people can keep their cars for four days in front of my house. That's all I have to say.
Ms. Montgomery, appreciate it. Morgan Emlee, Sharon Keenan, and Raymond Keenan. Morgan Emlee. Evening.
Good evening. I'd like to, you know, thank the council for just trying to consider parking, but it's a long-term thing to figure out how you're going to do it. But right now, there, there are people that are breaking the law. There are ordinances, both California Vehicle Code and Daly City ordinances regarding driving on sidewalks, parking on sidewalks, and nothing's being done about it. These people are breaking the law. And if they don't, if something isn't done to curb that, it just continues to grow. And there, there, you know, I realize the city has limited resources as far as police assistance or whatever, but there are other communities or cities that have taken on volunteer enforcement, where they, pictures are taken, they go through training through the police department, and they, they report these things to the city, and the city, you know, does it. Malibu's one, there's Washington DC's in the, in the process of doing it. It's, you know, maybe it's a way to, to, you know, reduce the problem, but you, but in order to correct the problem, you have to stop what you can stop now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Emlee. Sharon Keenan?
In our area, we have at least four cars in one place in the driveway, and at least six cars parked on the street, along the park, where they leave it there all the time, except for street cleaning. Then they come and park it across the street, across there, and then get their streets cleaned. We have another one up the street from us that stores cars in the street, but covers them up with the covers, which they can, supposed to do, and has another one in his driveway. them up with the covers, which they can, supposed to do, and has another one in his driveway. We have another house around the corner that have multiple cars. There must be 20 people living in that house for all the cars that they've got. All these are legal parking spaces that could be taken up by having them not have a business out of their house that interferes with their neighbors. I think there's a code on the books that says you may have a business, but you may not interfere with your neighbor's life with it. So these things are happening all over. If they have to have a tag, they can't prove that all those cars belong to someone living in those houses. So I would be willing to put a tag on my cars and see that they have some legal parking around our area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keenan. Raymond Keenan? And Kyren Milton, and then David Kahn.
Your parking code is a joke. You got three days, I thought of me or somebody else turning into the police. Then it takes three days that the police come out and put a toll tag or whatever is on it. By the, six days are over, the seventh day, they move it anyhow. So we get nothing done with this three-day deal that we got, well, might as well say six days. It, it, I came in front of city council 20 years ago about the same thing and nothing's ever done about it. It's, it's just too long for somebody. My wife is, as you've seen, is fairly crippled a little bit. And I sometimes, I got a walker across the street with his, next to the school that people go by there, it's 45, 50 miles an hour. And instead of being able to park in front of your own place, I got three cars, I got two in my garage, and if I have to, I can put the other one in the driveway. It don't bother nobody and anything else. These garages are for parking cars, not for litter. Please, I know the fire department says they can't do nothing anymore, but there must be some ordinance that you guys can put on besides what the state wants. The state, the heck with the state. I mean, get these garages empty. We've seen one guy the other day, he, he had to force his way into the garage to get in. He couldn't even get in his own garage. It's ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keenan. Kyren Milton?
Hi.
Evening.
I want to thank you for starting the wall rolling on this anyway. I live at 831 South Mayfair. My big complaint has been the overnight camping of the Uber and Lyft drivers, throwing litter everywhere. And I told them, hey, will you park in front of my neighbors? I've got a couple of neighbors that are elderly widows and they get nervous. These guys are sitting there all, parked there all night. They say, hey, would you mind moving? And they, you know, give me the finger and tell me, go stick yourself. I've talked to the police. They told me, yeah, there's no ordinance against camping. And on city streets, as long as they're not in a parking, private or public parking lot, they have the right to park and camp anywhere. That's my, that was, you know, been a problem until I read that AB 516 is now in the State Assembly and they're, and Weiner, our state representative, is pushing it through to do away with the 72-hour parking limit and to allow people to camp in front of your residence and establish residency on our public streets. That's in state legislature right now and they're pushing it through. And they want to do away with the six-month expired registration, so do away with towing completely in the state of California. So without parking permits, we're part of the state of California. We're going to be overruled, no matter what we do, if we don't have a parking permit in process and going before this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Milton. David Kahn?
Thank you for the time. And I live, I used to live near the West Mooh High. And the problem with that, we had like 10, about 10 years, 10 to 15 years ago, every time I come, about 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, there's parking. I can at least find at least two, three parking spots. Now, drove around for an hour without parking and sometime I had to walk about 15, 20 minutes back to my home, I had to park. And later on, now we moved to St. Francis Heights. It's almost the same. From a house, in a house only, we have four tenants. It become, every house I was looking at, every, every resident has in-law, you know, at least three families in it. Every house, the whole row, everywhere I look at, there was not a single house with single occupancy anymore. But the driveway and the garage is only one. And anyone cannot park anywhere else. The problem, you know, let them, let them get the, from, what we call, if they want to do the in-law, multiple unit, let them do it, you know, your front lawn, you've got to make the parking or something accessible. Otherwise, you know, we'll have this problem because the population growth is double every 25 years. Thus, you know, it's, I don't know why people do not think about it. The policymakers, they have to look at the long term, how the population grow, how economy grow, how the impact. Otherwise, our future generation, they will be in disaster. If we don't have any, any regression come up, it will be worse. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kahn. All right, those are all the speaker cards I have. Let me, hopefully have maybe about 10 more minutes. So let me ask my council for any comments or questions or thoughts. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank everyone for coming. It definitely shows that you're definitely concerned and we are concerned. There's a couple of things I would like to ask of staff as we proceed further. First of all, a confused mind always says no. I think when we have these forums to get these different neighborhoods together, that part of the forum should be a presentation or questions to law enforcement. What is the law on parking? What is the law on 72 hours and leaving your cars out on the street? And what can the police department do? Why is it that our police department is writing 256 citations when, from what I gather, more could be done? I remember sitting here before and listening to a council meeting and somebody exclaimed, "We turn our heads on enforcement of parking, thus subsequently it is complaint-driven only." So would that mean that you have to make a complaint before an officer comes out? Well, I don't know, but I need our police officers to be prepared for these communities to provide the law on how you can park. Excuse me. Thank you very much. Secondly, I heard an excellent idea tonight. Why can't we open up some of our schools to provide parking for our residents? But you got to be out by the time school starts, so we should look into that. Timeline. I'm, the timeline is very aggressive. Some folks here have said, "Why wait so long?" But to get all the different communities involved, some of these community meetings together is going to have to run concurrently. We have a lot of neighborhoods in Daly City. I, for one, the, I see the biggest problems in the Northeast, but yet when I saw all the zones A, B, C, and D, I didn't see the area of Mission and Templeton, the Northeast sector of our city, in one of those zones. But I learned something else new tonight. We've got to get the citizens together and they can file a petition to become a zone. So that was excellent. Almost done, Mr. Mayor. For those folks who don't know, and I do see some infirmaries out there and I'm one as well, Daly City is soon going to be submitting an application to the World Health Organization to be known as an age-friendly city. We realize that we have some aging population and we need to do all that we can to accommodate them as well. For staff, we need to also provide at these community forums, all the resources that are available to our community, such as iHelp, and how they can make these complaints. Some of them don't even know that they can just log on and just type up a complaint and our staff will look into it. Lastly, for staff, I saw a slide that someone in Daly City has eight perm, eight parking permits? You know, as we work forward, maybe, that may be limited. Maybe you get the first two and you pay for the other ones. I don't know, but eight permits sounds quite excessive to me. I could go on, but that's all I'm going to give you right now, Mr. Mayor, because I know this is a work in progress.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Dr. Rod?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for all the community members that, that are here and present to engage in this discussion because from what I hear is just, it's been an issue for decades now, right? And I understand the reason why people have to have multiple families living in one home. It's getting expensive to live, right? Just for like my house alone, I remember getting a ticket for parking on the side. And, you know, as a person that was working multiple jobs, that hurts, right? We're not homeowners, but we have people that are honest working people, working jobs. And I do agree that we need to have all the voices, all the discussions, opinions that need to be, come to the forefront so that we have a, we have a discussion or a solution that, that comes to a consensus agreement in terms of what is best for Daly City. Because I kind of see what's happening in Peninsula, throughout the peninsula and throughout the city of San Francisco, but we need to have a solution that's unique to Daly City. So I really commend everybody here that came here and voiced their opinions and hopefully that we could come to some sort of equitable solution in terms of moving forward with parking because it is an issue. Everybody wants to live here in the Bay Area. There's a lot of jobs out here. And I just want to, again, thank the staff for putting together this report. It's very thorough and I think it's a pretty good jump-off point to where we can go towards. So thank you again.
Thank you, Dr. Rod. Ms. Manello?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to also echo a thank you to all the community members that spoke up this evening. And then around the solve and solution, I think it is around like a neighborhood-based approach. And that's why it's so important to hear from the residents that are facing the parking situation because it is different in each neighborhood. What I'd like to request, and I didn't hear it on kind of the list, is working also with commercial properties adjacent to neighborhoods. It may be far off, but an idea to see maybe working with businesses and neighborhoods in, they have parking lots that are not utilized during the evenings and maybe there's some way as working together with business and neighborhoods to find a solution of some sort. But I, I know that I am inspired by each and every one of you, knowing that we have engaged community. And like what my colleague said, we're here to work together. So we're looking forward to hearing from more of you and what we can do together. So thank you.
Ms. Steve Giovanni?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't want to echo the same, but everybody knows it's really important that we know that you guys are long-term residents. Quality of life has been affected. It's unacceptable that somebody has to drive around at night for, for an hour and then try to find a spot and can't find one. And then, you know, like, we do live in a safe city, but it's, it's really inappropriate when you're a homeowner, been here. For me, a couple of things I've identified for staff is I know that we had, had discussions in the past on the Airbnb. I don't know how we can tie this in, but there was a discussion on absentee landlords or landlords present. And it seems to be that's an issue that people seem to be concerned about, about the absentee landlords. Also with the Uber and the Lyft, to identify who are the residents that are working for Uber and Lyft, you know, like they live there, but not the ones that are here from, no offense to them, that are camping in front of South Mayfair and overnight parking in their Westlake areas that are taking up, not just the parking, but these are essentially people that are non-residents. I don't know we, how we guide that. That would be more feedback, maybe with permits or whatever, that would help eliminate the Uber and the Lyft in that area. And I don't know how that's going to work because I know we need to have community forums. I've heard a lot on the garages and maybe, I know that we can't by law go into people's personal property and tell them what to do. I don't think the law allows us to do that. But is there any kind of like incentives or would people even be involved, would care enough about their neighbors to? There might be some that would be willing to if we did like a camp, I don't know, campaign or caring about your neighbors and eliminating, maybe some of the seniors need help. There might be people that are disabled and may just need help and outreach to clean out their, their garages. And then maybe they can use it because I know that is a big issue. So it's not like 100%. And the parking on the lawns, I believe I heard a woman say, and we did have a task force and when the ladies here, Ms. Lily Louis, tonight on the paving, I think in her neighborhood was over by Bellevue and that, I don't know if that works in her area as well with the paving, that, that was working with Ms. Louis and her task force that as an option because she was talking about yards. But we definitely don't want 100% meant because of the, you know, the environmental effects on that as well and aesthetics. I think that was a big part of their task force at the time. And also if you were doing a task force, that they be given the data from all neighbors. Like, like they did a great job in the, in the back before and our others issues, but this time because this is such a huge issue that, because I heard from other people, well, that's not what, how I felt. Nobody asked me, but we got to make sure everybody, it looks like that we're going to make sure that everybody's involved so that if there is a task force, it's not based on the person's voice, which it seemed to be worked well before, it's based on the issue itself and how the input was from the community. This is just a little bit of direction I'm just trying to point out. I know there's other things. And all neighborhoods are different. I remember as a community member, which respectfully the mayor, I believe he was still mayor at the time, which I liked the fact that he was trying to figure an equitable issue at the time. So I know that was very difficult. And now that we're here again, Mr. Mayor, that he was really trying to make sure everything was equitable, but our structures and our homes are all different in different areas. And there is issues which maybe you haven't heard, but because I'm out in the community and not to say that you haven't heard them from St. Francis and from Bay Shore, but there are because some of them are here tonight. And, you know, I hear that when I go to different meetings and such and even in Southern Hills. So I know we're going to do, and I really appreciate the staff. This is just the beginning. And I, I want to know that the gentleman that, if I know correctly, Mr. Mayor, that we are allowed to, even if the bill went through on the camping, we do not have to allow the camping. Is that correct?
We'll have to.
Look into it. So we're going to try to be proactive, hopefully, that we can do something about the Uber and the Lyft, making sure that, that these neighborhoods don't turn into something of a camping and for the quality of life with, even though it's very hard on people. So that's it for now, just in guidance, if we can get some information. And from the parking, which I agree, thank you, council member, Dr. Rod, in getting the enforcement, their feedback is important. And it may require more parking because I know we're pretty limited on staff for the parking enforcement. And maybe we have to look into that and see how we can possibly increase staff. I know there's cost to it, but because this is such a quality of life issue and impact these people, that maybe we can look into that and see how many staff, what would be needed. Because I know they're out there. I see them every day, out there doing their tickets and riding around and trying to do the best they can. So that's it for me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Giovanni. I have a couple of comments. So I would like the staff to look at the issue of the street cleaning and the synchronization of maybe a more efficient and better way to do it. For example, where I live, street cleaning is on Monday morning at 7:00 AM. So what ends up happening is on Sunday night, the whole side of my street empties out and parks on the other side. So for a whole night, there is nobody parking on one side of the street because they don't want to get up early in the morning and move their cars. So I think if we had a, a better system to eliminate that, what I think is inefficient, maybe we can free up some more parking and unnecessarily burden people in that manner. The other thing that I didn't really consider, and I'm glad it was brought up today, was the issue of commercial parking. And what I'm, I'm. And what I'm, I'm interested in learning, what effect has commercial parking done to decrease the supply of residential parking? And maybe we need to look at, and have an honest discussion about what our priorities are and who should be given priority when it comes to the, the parking space we have, because we are obviously a bedroom community with residents primarily, and, and although I have sympathy and also want to consider people who work and, and rely on their vehicles commercially for a living, but we need to have an honest discussion about what, what is the trend? What is, what is the effect that has on our neighborhoods and, and the available parking? And so I'm also concerned about the issue Ms. Giovanni raised, which is the, and obviously from you folks, is the idea that these parking garages are not being used as parking garages. And I, I'd like to know, what is the law? And, and I'd like some research done on how we can free up that spot and whether or not we can do it, obviously legally, without violating anyone's Fourth Amendment rights and property rights. But, you know, being used as storage, it's, it's really, it's, it's taken up a lot of the parking spaces that should be free for everybody on the street. And the other thing I want us to carefully consider is the fees that are going to be imposed on people. I want us to study that very carefully. I want justification for how much the fees are. Obviously, it, it should be reasonable, but it also should make sense according to, and also, we need to talk about how many, how much, what criteria? Should there be provisions for guest parking? And is, do we distinguish between owners and renters? But I think we need to fully develop those topics in that conversation. I've also been, in, in, leading up to discussion, there have been people in the community who have advocated for a citywide parking permit and not just for certain neighborhoods. And I'd like us to at least talk about that, see if there's, because this problem is gaining ground. It's not losing ground, and it's reaching more and more neighborhoods in Daly City. So perhaps a big, bold solution is to go for it widely and not discriminate against any particular neighborhood with different rules for different neighborhoods. And then, um, gosh. Yeah, those are my thoughts so far. But again, so thank you again for all your input. This is not the last, obviously, and we look forward to more and more participation from you. So stay tuned, and let me leave the last word up to Ms. Mop.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and council members and members of the community. As anticipated, we leave with more questions than we do solutions, but that's okay, because that's how we get started. I think what I'll do is just confirm that the proposed action timeline works for the council, but also take into consideration each of your comments, which were incredibly insightful. What I will do, or my staff will do, is compile the list of concerns by the residents tonight, as well as the input that you provided and the follow-up, and to the extent that it looks like we might want to do another study session, we can do that with some of the follow-up items. My mind was racing with answers to some of your questions, but we certainly can have another study session later this summer. So I just really appreciate everybody's time and input, and it's a good start.
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.